Good afternoon. Welcome to our first agenda, which is the Joint Committees on Education and Transportation and Culture and the Arts. To hear House Bill 1837, HD1 relating to school safety. And this bill requires the Department of Education to grant public access to emergency action plans that do not pose a security risk to students, staff, or guests of school campuses. Requires each department school to have a comprehensive school evacuation communication plan for use during emergencies. Requires the DOE to collaborate with DOT to assess all department school campuses to determine if there are sufficient emergency evacuation routes for each campus and report to the legislature also appropriate funds. First to testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please. Oh my. Superintendent.
We morph.
Assistant. Please identify yourself.
Chair Kidani, Chair Lee, and Committee members. Audrey Donohue, interim Assistant Superintendent from OFO, testifying on behalf of this bill. And we stand on our written testimony, providing comments. And if you have any questions, I brought the expert with me so he can answer the questions.
I think that you should give us some information and provide some testimony on this. This is an important issue. Okay, you're off the hot seat. Next.
Hi, Senator Kidani. Long time no see, ma'am.
Aren't you lucky? Sorry. Too much coffee.
Good afternoon, Chair, and everyone. My name is Max Mendoza. I'm the Director of the Safety and Security Emergencies Preparedness Branch for the DOE. My understanding, if I'm correct, is just a summary of what our testimony is? Okay. Basically, we're providing comments, and many of the things that are already in the bill already exist. As you can see here, we're requesting that public access to the plans may not be, you know, we would recommend against that, but the department is already on its way in developing emergency action plans. In fact, we're about seventy percent done. We've crafted emergency action plans for all of the Neighbor Islands schools, and our intent is to do it for all 258 of our schools to ensure that they're standardized and they meet Federal Emergency Management Agency requirements. So we're on our way in doing that. Nevertheless, each of our school is required to have an EAP in accordance with OSHA regulations. So they already have one. It's just a matter of ensuring it's standardized and it meets FEMA requirements. And it also indicates here that we are responsive to cultural awareness. However, the translation needs may be a little, may be a little challenging to meet at this time, especially during high-intensity incidents such as active shooter, where we're going to have to, the expectation is to meet the 15 languages and all that. That may be a bit difficult to do, and we're asking for money as well. But that's basically it. Pending any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take all the testimony on this measure before we ask questions. Thank you. Next to testify, Ann Horiuchi, Deputy Attorney General.
Here's Kidani, Lead Vice Chair Kim, and members. Ann Horiuchi, Department of the Attorney General. As we set forth in our testimony, we are suggesting that in order to clarify that there will not be a new cause of action against the DOE or the state as a result of what's in this bill, we've suggested an amendment to the bill. We're also suggesting language that would have parents and guardians provide updated contact information to the schools. I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next to testify, Afrek Bemrun Guran.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and member of committee. Afrek Bemrun, Executive Director for the Office of Language Access. So we stand on our written testimony commenting on this measure, but in sum, we just want to make sure that when we talk about language access, it's not free. A lot of time when people didn't take their budget into consideration at the plan and translation, like I say, in my testimony, it could be costly, and they're going to do for the 15 languages, it should take into consideration. And it also, we offer a comment regarding another means of communication. It should be, it could be in the form of video, video clip, or PSA that could be considered as well. And I'm available for any questions the committee may have. Thank you, Chair.
Next to testify, Dentry Burkeldus.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Elizabeth Pearson. I'm an interim of the State Council on Development of Disabilities, and the council stands on their written testimony. Any questions, I can forward to my boss.
Testimony and support?
Yes, and support.
Thank you. Next to testify, James LaBrie.
Committee members. James LaBrie. I would like to stand on my testimony, but one bullet point that I would like to highlight is being that I'm a disabled person, in the actual case of an emergency, I would suggest that we need to, if it's not on the third, if I'm not on the first floor, for instance, how would we be able to get down in an actual emergency? So I would please ask that you guys take that into consideration. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Also on Zoom, we have Osa Tui.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
She's present. Oh, hi, Osa.
Everybody's getting closer.
Alaha Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Osa Tui, President of the Hawaii State Teachers' Association. The Hawaii State Teachers' Association supports House Bill 1837, and we want to highlight the part where we strongly believe law enforcement personnel should be aware of and consulted on school emergency plans. When we do our drills on off-campus evacuation, they are there to supervise us, and they're the ones who know the community, so they should be part of this plan. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Laverne. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this matter? Okay. Members, any questions from our testifiers?
I have a question.
Senator Richard.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Mendoza.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you. You said that you're working on the plans, but you don't support it being public. Why?
In safety and security, sir, there's two things that are very important to us: operation security and information security. And the reason why plans are treated that way, they should be treated confidential. It's basically a game book, and we don't want to reveal that to the entire public because it could get into the wrong hands, where it could be used against us during an active Emergency action plans are confidential and should be accessible to only those who have a need to know: law enforcement, fire, emergency first responders, and those sort of folks that have a stake in the safety and security of our schools.
Okay. I thought you might say that, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I think we're talking about kids, and we're talking about parents that are concerned about their kids, so there should be some way to communicate, even if you had a small group, parent teachers' association, something that we're privy to it, so they could assure the population. But I appreciate your answer on that.
Yes, sir. And if I could, in emergency action plans, there are PII, Personally Identifiable Information, in those plans: phone numbers, addresses, names, and those sort of things, where people are very sensitive, in fact. And to answer your question about access to parents, we can easily, if the parents would like information, we can easily make a general guidance portfolio that could be accessible, just to give general guidance as to how we do evacuations, lockdown drills, and those sort of things, shelter in place.
And I think that needs to be part of the communication, so thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, further questions? Senator Favela?
I'll sit here this time. Anyway, just going forward, I can understand not giving names and all that. Really, the community already knows where the evacuation area is in any kind of time of threat, but what I recommend going forward, now that we continue ask, and hopefully we can fund law enforcement. I know before, prior to when I brought this up before, oh, we don't want nobody without gun, we don't want them treating our kids like prisoners, but in this day and age, look what's happening now. So I believe that each school, I still believe this, with your emergency preparation plan should include a law enforcement officer on campus, because HPD does help, our emergency officers does help in our community, but what if there is no HPD, because they have to go to an emergency situation? That's why having a law enforcement officer on each property of the DOE would be very crucial to what you guys are talking now. Second, going forward with this evacuation and area to have, an area where they can evacuate. DOE standards for evacuation back in front of the school is usually the standard, but a school in Kihei don't have a back of the school, they only have front. It didn't even meet the minimum qualification for those emergency evacuations. And the reason why I bring this up, because in my district, schools is ready to be built: elementary schools, high schools in the next few days. That was one of the preparations that the developers had to bring in, to make sure that a back and front emergency exit. So I'm just saying, the Neighbor Islands got caught shot, and they wanted one school, but not one easy place for have them evacuate on a time of safety unless you got a helicopter. Those are the things that I think you guys should take in consideration. And more preparation may be the one in Maui, because they don't have a back entrance, as a lot I heard, front and back evacuation access, because they don't, they don't even have a crossing that is safe. Appreciate it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, further questions? If not. Okay. Yeah, I think we have to close this agenda before going to the next. I'm going to recess for now. Reconvening the Joint Committee on Education and Committee on Transportation and Culture and Arts, dealing with House Bill 1837 relating to school safety. Thank you for the testimony and the recommendation of the Education Chair is to pass this. Do we have amendments on this? To pass with amendments? Okay. So we are, the amendments is to adopt the testimony of the Department of Attorney General as well as Department of Education, and also we have some technical and non-substantive amendments.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Okay. For the vote, Chair votes aye. Education Committee, House Bill 1837, House Draft 1, passed with amendments. The Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Five members voting affirmative. Recommendations adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. TCA Committee, same recommendation.
Okay, Chair's recommendation to pass HB 1837, House Draft 1, with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
The Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafonte is excused. Senator Cano.
Aye.
Senator Awak is excused. Measures adopted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Welcome to the Committee on Education. We have several agendas this afternoon, and the first one is measures that were deferred. I'm sorry. This is for House Bill 1651, HD2, relating to the safety of educational workers. Before I take the vote on this agenda, I'd like to ask both the Attorney General and Superintendent to come forward. I understand that both of you have met and want to give us an update, so please, please update the committee.
I'll start. Thank you, Chair. I'm Ann Lopez. I'm the Attorney General. Thank you for listening to us today without having put in formal testimony. We met yesterday to talk about some of the issues that educational workers are facing. And while there's a breadth of issues, one of the, I guess, burgeoning problems is actually helping teachers and other educational workers deal not just with students who are disrespectful and abusive, but with parents. And trying to find a way to amend the bill to deal with that seemed really like a step too far at this point. We talked about the fact that right now, the DOE doesn't have an umbrella, code of conduct for parents that lays out, how do you behave when you're in a meeting? If you use abusive language, or you're swearing, you need to, you can be told to stop, and what that process is like. And so what we talked about was getting together with my deputies and DOE and coming up with a solid code of conduct that every parent can be aware of, so that the school, whether it's in PTA meetings or IEP meetings, has a way to try and get parents to act responsibly.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Chair, thank you. Kitaishi, Superintendent. We did have a meeting with Attorney General Lopez, and the department is looking very much forward to establishing this code of conduct for all of our parents, as we continue to look for ways to continue to work together in the best interest of our students. And we believe that this code of conduct will help set expectations for everyone, common expectations for everyone across our school community, so we look forward to working with the Office of the Attorney General.
Thank you. And this is students, parents, as well as guardians?
Parents and guardians, yes, Chair.
And we would say the family members of the student, so if it's a grandparent but not a guardian, or an auntie, the child goes with, or something like that. So it would be the family member who is responsible for the child.
So do you have a timeline for something that you're going to work on?
We'll be getting together right away.
Yeah, and we thought there's two steps that we can do originally, the admin rules will take a little bit longer, but I think, Ken, we were talking about being able to do an actual just code of conduct that could be completed sooner and start being circulated as those rules are developed and implemented and given public testimony.
So we don't necessarily need a bill. We're going to have a code of conduct.
Yes. And you have my commitment and my deputy's commitment to work on this collaboratively and get it done.
Now, the members, questions?
Yeah, I got a question. So you guys already have the Chapter 19 for students, yeah? So there's not any way, I mean, instead of going, making, I guess, reinventing the will, underlying or working with Chapter 19 and adding the conduct for mother, father, sisters, brothers, aunties, uncles, whatever, onto that, Chapter 19, because it does talk about meetings with students and parents and whatnot, because, and especially with special education, when they have the IEP meetings and they have their teacher there and whatnot, there should be a protection. And that's the reason why I really, I really like this bill, because I know what they go through. I've seen it as a custodian, as a security, and a parent, what the difficulties, or what the principals got to go through when a parent comes with a stick running through the campus to beat up their child. It's hard. It's hard. I mean, for what they have to go through, so whatever amendments and whatever the Chair decides to do, I'll support it, but instead of waiting for, trying to do a new code or adding codes, you guys should just beef up Chapter 19, and every kid can get, and every kid that's sent home, so the parent would have.
Thank you, Senator. Chapter 19, Senator, thank you, deals specifically solely with student misconduct.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, that, under that chapter, we would be limited to student behavior and student misconduct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chair.
Senator Richard.
Yeah, thank you. I like the idea about a code of conduct, but that's for more or less decorum in managing people. What about an outright threat made to a student or to a teacher? How does DOE handle that? And what are the laws that govern that?
Thank you, Senator. If a threat is made to a teacher on campus, it's a threat, we do notify the police, and the employee is given the option to follow police report, and then law enforcement would then follow up accordingly in that situation.
But what does DOE, where does DOE fit in this? Because as an employer, when I've had problems with the public, yes, it's an employee, but also, we as a company also help getting through this thing, because they wouldn't be put in a bad position if they weren't working. So we have a teacher put in a bad position, or a student put in a bad position, and they wouldn't be there if it wasn't at school. So how does DOE address this? It's not just call the police. What's the follow-up?
Right. Each situation, Senator, is very unique in its own right, and so working, the school principal would then address each individual system, each individual incident, in its own merit, in terms of what needs to be addressed. So school principal would definitely work together with the teacher to deem whatever appropriate next steps are needed. It's difficult to speak generally, because each situation is unique in nature.
Yeah, and I got that part, but you know, I'm listening to what Senator Favela's talking about, and being very pointed as a DOE, because they're there because they're there for DOE. So is this, we call the police and decide, or do you call the parent in? Do you set up a meeting? How do you handle that? What's your follow-up, not just phone call?
In situations that personally I've been involved in as a principal, there are situations where a parent or guardian became unruly in the school to a teacher and made threats, would definitely involve law enforcement, but as a school, I would set up a meeting with the particular parent to address whatever issue that needs to be addressed in moving forward, and make very clear that what the expectations are for that parent.
And is that DOE policy?
I'm not sure if it's policy. I believe it's standard practice, though, that principals would, it's common practice, that principals would address whatever issues that come up with parents or guardians in different situations.
May I add this?
Yeah, please.
To that, it's, this is a really hard situation, because when we talk about a threat, from a criminal and legal perspective, the threat has to be an immediate threat that one reasonably believes they're in danger. So what we need to do, and I think particularly with the parental code, is we need, for everything that falls short of that, and I hate to say that there are people who know exactly where that line is, so that everything that falls short of that, if it's the conduct of the parent or guardian or whomever, we need to have a policy that is district-wide, that is standardized, that says, when misconduct happens, if they're on campus, we already have a process to issue a trespass letter, saying they cannot come back on campus until we've worked out what the content will be. But also, we need to be able to say, we need to be able to structure when they can contact the school, and when the school will deal with them, and under what circumstances. So with the parents, I think we have a lot, we have work to do on that, and I think it should be statewide. I think Senator Kidani reminded us that we're the only state with a statewide Department of Education and not districts. So as a result, I think we really need to work as a state to figure out where those boundaries are. If it's a threat and they call the police, then the police absolutely need to respond and take those situations seriously.
I agree, but so DOE also must need to respond and take that seriously and be part of the solution.
Senator, if I may, also, we do have a system-wide trespass letter, as Attorney General Lopez has shared, that is available to schools, that we would notify parents if these kinds of, those kinds of behaviors continue, parent would not be allowed on the school campus. And there have been situations where that trespass letter has been used, and parent is not allowed to, parent or guardian is not allowed to back onto the campus. I believe it's for one calendar year.
Some of the testimony on this bill has bothered me, and I think we need to, whatever we need to do, is, I see bullying going on, I see threatening going on, and I take great offense to all of that. So, Chair, I don't want to belabor the point, but I want to talk story on this, so appreciate it, Chair. Thank you.
So it's just a reminder that this bill only deals with procedures for handling harassment of educational workers and students.
Yeah, that I do.
Thank you. So the recommendation of the Chair will be to defer House Bill 1651, HD2. Moving on to our next agenda. House Bill 500, HD1, relating to education, appropriates funds to DOE to promote surfing as an intercollegiate. So appropriate funds to DOE to promote surfing as an intercollegiate sport, effective, I'm sorry. Members, we're requesting to amend this bill to provide funds for various workforce readiness programs and opportunities for student success, to include practical, real-life implementation for student learning. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Murat, and the department stands on its written testimony offering comments.
Thank you. Questions, members?
Chair.
Yes.
Does the DOE have capacity to carry out what this bill is putting in? Can you guys carry out what, if we pass this bill, and when it comes into the certain sports, can you guys handle that?
Regarding the surfing?
Yeah.
Right now, Maui is the only island offering surfing.
Right now, Maui is the only island offering surfing, um, in their inner, in their, in their league. Right now, the, um, other leagues and, and principals were not offering it.
So there's no capacity for it?
Well, i- it's not one of the sports that they've elected to, um, add to their repertoire of sports that they offer, um, for their students. So it's a capacity issue. It's also, they have to determine where and when those prac- practice sessions would be. There's a ratio of, um, athletes to coaches due to the nature of the sport, and so currently, it's not on the docket, um, for many of our high schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm gonna call the recess. Okay, reconvening our committee on education, uh, House Bill 500, HD1. To testify also is Beth Matsuda.
Hi.
Welcome.
Surfing is growing. Maui is the only island right now that has it. But we have 13 schools right now, and we have two more schools coming on, so we have eight OIA schools. They're involved, five ILH schools. We follow the curriculum that Jim Howell developed and was approved already by the AG's office. Um, so all our kids have to go through junior guard training. All the coaches have to go through a certification course. We also need to write out risk assessment for the beach that our kids practice on. We've had strong community support. Um, my school alone, we have over 20 extra surfboards. But it is, now there are 35 colleges that offer surfing scholarships. So surfing is, it's a, approved sport on the east coast, on the west coast in Australia, it's a high school sport. Now it's a 35 colleges have approved it as a college sport, and they're offering scholarships. So this is a way for our kids also to get to college. It also feeds into the lifeguard programs. Um, we've had, I don't know, we've just had a lot of strong community support. We have schools waiting to come in, but I just haven't been able to fit in their training yet. But I really, really wish, hope that you will approve this and fund us.
Thank you, there. Members' questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to testify is Kylie Sato on Zoom.
Hi, my name is Kylie Sato. I'm the captain of La La Hua High School Surf Team. While surfing is a sanctioned sport, there are no committed resources. Surfing aligns with the DOE's visions and values and is connected to our history, culture, Aina, and career opportunities here in Hawaii. By passing HB 500, HD1, it is a step forward in making high school surfing a recognized sport and for investing in our students and giving them an opportunity to connect the passion to their school and create ocean stewards now and for a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, if not, recess. Go ahead.
DOE. So we're asking, you're asking for 800, the bill asking for $800,000? What would this money be used for?
Plus, what would the $800,000 be used for? For surfing?
The bill's asking for it, right? So if you get the $800,000, what would the money be used for?
So I can suggest $800,000 for surfing. Yeah, so there's a number of different, um, activities we have. I'm just gonna pull that real quick, but it's for, um, equipment as well as, I apologize, I don't have it. So it's for event equipment, uh, which is about, um, school uniforms, coaches, and, um, so event equipment includes, when you have these tournaments, you'll need pop-up tents, uh, tables, chairs, generators, um, as well as iPads for judging and sound system as well.
Okay, so this is going to be for each school, or how, how is the money being?
So, um, at the way we, we, uh, we priced it out was to have, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the number. Um, it's not gonna be for each school, it'll be for as tournaments are put up, but judges, head judges as well are, need to be paid for each of the, the, the tournaments that are put up as well.
Okay, so this doesn't go to a school? It only goes to a tournament?
Uh, no, it goes to, towards supporting surfing across, across the board for the department. So for any school that would want to, to include surfing as part of their, um, as a sport for their school, we'd be able to help support that, if they wanted to build a team, for example, like the La La Hua.
Okay, so if 10 schools want to do this, that money is going to go to what?
So, it'll, um, we're not sure exactly how many schools are wanting to do, but it would go towards helping them set up their, their sport. We might not spend all of that $800,000, um, upfront, but that would be something to, as more interest, um, comes for that, for surfing, then we'd be able to provide the, uh, equipment and.
Okay. First of all, let me do this. I, I surfed when I was really young, and I support surfing, and I think it's sad that Hawaii should be the surfing capital of the world.
Sure.
Saying that, though, I don't know that you folks have really thought this out. $800,000, what is that gonna pay for? You're telling me tournaments, judges, but if it wants a school? So I have six schools in my district. If they all wanna put surfing, then how are we gonna support them? Because $800,000 is not gonna pay for all the instructors and, and the uniforms and equipment and to set them up for the less to have a tournament and have judges and have scoreboards or whatever you're gonna have.
Correct. You're right. It's, it's not gonna be enough for all. It's, this is gonna be a start to sort of get it kicked off, as far as, and, and as someone.
Yeah, but how? Kick off what? One school? Six schools? And you're gonna get, you know what I'm saying? It doesn't sound like a plan that's been thought through. And I can't just see putting money in without you having a good plan as to, we're gonna start with three schools, and these three, the first three schools that come in, this is what we're gonna be able to give them. Because if a school embarks on it and then they end up what? They, they cannot only have two kids in the program because they don't have money, then what?
Correct.
It's not thought through.
Well, and so Senator, I apologize. I guess one step back, I would like to say, is that, um, we are not, um, we, that is why we had comments. We weren't coming out here with full support of the bill. We do have comments, because surfing is something that, although it is, it is, as a surfer myself, I, I think it's great. I think we should have surf teams at every school, but it is something that it's, it's a sport that not all schools wanna engage in. It's very dangerous. You can't control the environment. You don't know what, um, not everyone has the ability to swim in a way that would be safe, and so throwing money at, um, at this is not necessarily gonna build up surfing as a sport, especially if there's no buy-in from HHSAA or other schools that wanna do it. So that is our reservation, but if you wanted an amount, that is the amount we are putting forward to try and boost surfing and, and make that a, a sport.
Yeah, but I don't see how it boosts surfing, because it really doesn't speak to, uh, a, a thought-out program that makes it feasible for a school to really partake in it, and then it's like, we're, we're gonna do one school only? I mean, I'm just, I think it's ha- not even half-baked, less than half-baked, and who's, who in DOE, are you folks promoting this at all? Pushing for this?
No.
DOE, no?
We offered, it wasn't our, we didn't introduce the bill, the department didn't introduce the bill, so we offered our comments on it.
Okay, so, so there's not somebody that's bird-dogging this, other than?
Chris Moore.
Okay, thank you.
Chair?
Senator Favella.
Wait, you can, you, but you can say? So like, um, do, do any of the schools have paddling?
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 Yes, I meant to, yes, there is paddling.
How did paddling start off?
I do not know that was paddling.
Okay, so the reason why I'm saying this, and you guys didn't do, or had enough thought, because you guys just was gonna put in comments, um, there's a process for everything? Did you guys ask the schools how they're already, right, surviving and going through it? Because I understand there is paddling competition, that they have to do the same thing what you just said. But for some of the stuff that you're adding, each school that's gonna be in the tournament or will be in the tournament, they can provide their own equipment. So if the schools or the DOE buys in on this, then it's like uniforms, right? The, the, uh, athletic director has to come up with uniforms. So uniforms should not be with the $800,000, because uniforms is gonna come through the AD, through the program of sports. So going forward with sports, I mean, I know surfing, surfboards come, but they gotta buy their own paddles, right? Same thing, right, with swimming as polo, the risk of somebody cramping and drowning, right, falling off the canoe, drowning. So they have all of these, these risks involved, but we are the surfing state of the world, and we backed door this for a long time, and I know it's not your fault, I'm just speaking. But anyway, where can we work with you guys and the ones that have successful programs already? And come up with a consensus on a real number that we can work with? Because by telling us you need generators, tent like that, I could go in my yacht and grab one generator for Campbell High School. They don't need pay for them. They need tower lights. I get them for them for free. They don't need pay for that, too. That's how we got our home games. But you guys are generalizing things, because you wasn't prepared to support it in a sense of comments, so you guys don't have an actual number. So what I'm asking of the Chair, I'm asking if you guys can please really look into this. Talk to the La La Hua, talk to, uh, sorry, I don't know, I don't remember your name in the back there. But talk to these guys who already is kind of doing them and, and just stay in the flow to get one consensus of what we can do to really, um, the word that Senator Kim said, to, um, promote the sport. Because this, by you telling us these numbers, it's not promoting the sport. It's saying, oh, this is gonna be a burden. We need generators, we need tents, we need this, we need that. Negative. That's why you get sponsors. That's why you get community partners for. How you think they do the surfing meet? No. Don't come out of people's pocket. Sponsors, private partners, going forward. That's all. If you can just do that. As, uh, Senator, um, Chair?
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah. Chair, can I talk to the lady in the back? Ask her a question. Sorry. Jo- Joella, sorry. Sorry. Come, please.
I spent $6,000 of my own money.
Okay.
In five schools this year.
To, what school is this?
I'm from Wyandotte.
So what school is, Wyandotte High School?
Yes, but I brought in five other schools this year, and I spent $6,000 of my own money to bring them in, setting them up with all their classes, the coaches' classes, the junior lifeguard and all. So the schools provided, we provided our own rash guards, our own boards, our own pop-up tents. So basically, what we're looking for is just money to pay for the judges and the jet skis and our competition fees.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Do you have an estimate of what that cost is going to be?
Um, I talked to Luther Beck. He has a estimate.
Come, come.
Please come forward.
Thank you, Chair.
Everybody, the chair, our first chair, senators, so, my name is Luther Beck. I'm with the HHSAA. So, um, my job is the fundraising aspect of it, the community aspect, so. We do come from, uh, different backgrounds, um, but I think the funding for it, the $800,000 that the DOE and we are also asking for would really go a long way, but we will partner with the community to get money funded in, because like you said, it, it can't just be for generators, because I think all of us have generators. Could ask the community, but it's really for the judges and to get a professional level event. You know, I think it could be at a local gym or it could be at, um, we're not gonna go to a pipeline or anything like that, but I think just going to an area where we can present a professional type of, um, atmosphere for the student athletes, as well as getting people like Spectrum and definitely getting on the TVs, as well as shirts and vendors, you know, within the community, really getting those people involved would really help us financially, but we need the backing of, of you guys and, and the community to just get us going, because we wanna make this a state-run sport. It doesn't make any sense that Hawaii doesn't, can't declare a state champion. I think Carissa Moore would have been an easy contender for state champion, but there's a lot of other great athletes that paddle and that do surfing, that do other water sports, that wanna call themselves state champions, and I think this is one of the ways that we can do it.
Thank you.
Um, we have four schools that are going to nationals, so we do have the, well, the talent.
But you must have some idea of, say, what those, what the cost for those schools will be, and I guess that's my dilemma. Is that we don't know what you're expecting, what the costs are going to be, and, um, we're pulling numbers out of our hat.
Yeah, and it can't be just for first schools. It can't, it's an equal opportunity for all schools.
Right.
So we can't be just funding for.
There's 96 schools within the HHSAA, so we would like to offer it to everybody.
Yeah, but $800,000 is not gonna cut it.
I, I understand.
Yeah, so what I'm asking is that, so the $800,000, as I, I'm reading it, is for the promotion and support of surfing? Doesn't talk about equipment or anything? So are you actually going to hold surf meets? Do you expect the children, the, the students to have their own surfboards?
Yes.
Okay, and so.
Some of our kids are shaping boards now.
Okay, so if it's not for surfboards, it's for what?
It would be for the.
The beaches are free, the water's free. So the judges get $800,000?
No, well, uh, obviously, they wouldn't receive all of it, but, you know, the judges, we'd need to pay for lifeguards and for ocean safety, as well as, uh, the personnel that we have at every state.
How much per event do you need for a surf meet?
How many surf meets do you need before you can have a champion?
Um, we don't get charged per event. Ho- uh, Hawaii Surfing Association runs our meets right now, and so at the end, we get a bill, and bill comes out for all the school, all the 15 schools right now, comes out to about $42,000.
Okay, so what are you gonna do with the other $756, $58,000?
Hopefully bring in more schools, hopefully. So, I have schools that want to join, but they're, the cost is holding them back because they can't afford to pay the competition fees. We pay $3,300 right now per school.
Per school for competition?
Competition fees.
But does the schools have the coaches and the, and the people there that they gotta pay?
We have one faculty, coach, and then.
No, I'm not asking about you. I'm asking about across the board, schools, not just the competition fee, but whether or not the, each school has the, um, where's that, the foundation and the personnel to run a, a sport, another sport added to their repertoire of sports. But you folks need to come in with a detailed breakdown on how this money's gonna be utilized, how it's gonna be applied across the board, even what is it gonna go for? Because you can't just dish out $800,000 with, well, maybe it's gonna go for this, maybe it's gonna go for that.
Sure.
Right? I mean, it's a tax for it now.
So, so for the plans that you have to date for planned surf meets or whatever, you're saying, how much, how much of that cost per meet do you need for judges and, and anything else?
We just, we don't get charged per meet. We get charged for the season.
Okay, so how much for the season?
About $42,000 for the season for all 15 schools.
Okay, so why are we asking for an $800,000 appropriation?
So, the, the idea is to get more schools and to get it sanctioned by the DOE and, and funded from, from the taxpayers to get it across the board for an option for all schools right now. Maui is the only one. I understand our accounting isn't up to par, and I apologize for that, but we will work, work on that, because it's definitely something that I think the community could definitely use. Um, I think declaring a state champion would be a great, um, honor for anybody.
Okay, so this money is only to pay for meets? I'm still not getting the total cost.
So if they double, if they double them in schools, 16 and another 16, it only comes out to $84,000, yeah? So that's what she tried to ask, because she tried to work the numbers, and we gotta know the numbers.
So you're only paying for meets? Is that what, what we're hearing? That's all you need for? But you need it for surfing coaches? But you need it for surfing coaches? What's the cost of a surfing coach and do they only coach one school?
Right now, the coaches are all volunteers. So we're not getting paid at all.
Can I ask DOE a question?
Yes.
So DOE, as far as other sports like paddling, what kind of funding, do you get extra funding? Or does it come out of each school or how does that work?
Okay, thank you to Madam Chair and Vice Chair and Committee. My name is Bryce Conisher, I'm the OIA Executive Director. So to answer the question about how funding comes, to pay for coaches' salaries, the state gives the schools a lump sum for coaches' pay and depending on what we declare as sports. So paddling coaches are paid through that when we declare what sports are given and it's basically prorated among whatever schools have and have not.
Okay, so for all sports?
For all sports.
You get a lump sum, each school gets a lump sum and they decide on what sports that they're going to be able to fund?
It's actually the other way around where we declare the sports and then that determines how much we get.
Okay, so you deter, you, each school will determine which sports they're gonna cover, they go to DOE and then DOE gives them from your lump sum that you get from us on how you're gonna support that. And what about for tournaments and stuff like that?
Correct.
For meets, what do you guys?
For.
For that, for all these like paddling and other things?
For the paddling, I mean, that just comes from our regular OIA stuff. It doesn't really come from any DOE budget. That's the OIA recognizing the event itself.
Okay, so we are deviating by singling out a sport with monies, then no other sport is doing that? And so can we expect that other sports are gonna come in and want us to support them additionally than what the DOE is giving?
So the difference is they're running it as a club event right now, which is why it's a little different and that's why the ask is different. So it's the, the schools that are participating are in a club level.
Okay, so it's not a DOE, it's not a DOE sanctioned?
It's not a, it's not a league sanctioned event.
Is there a league?
OIA is the league for the, for the public schools of Oahu.
Is there an OIA surfing league?
No, there is not, the OIA does not offer surfing as a sport right now, only Maui does.
So we would have to get the OIA, OIA to do it, to have.
So, yeah, for us to determine whether to support, we would have to determine the interest in it and we would have to have at least half the leagues be interested in saying that they wanna start a team. I heard that it was eight of our OIA schools, which is not, it's about one-third of our league. So it wouldn't be considered a sport, a league-recognized sport.
Okay, thank you.
Reconvening, video and education. I think I need to go out and surf right now.
You could catch a wave.
I feel like I am on a wave. Okay, where are we?
We are talking about amendments to this measure.
This is the House Bill 500. Okay. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments. We are appropriating, inserting a blank appropriation amount for the following programs, noting specific costs for each program in the committee report. Yeah, so for the promotion and support of surfing as an intercollegiate sport.
Blank them out?
No. For the promotion and support of surfing as an intercollegiate sport, because they're already providing it as a sport, we are going to appropriate the $42,000 and ask that we get more information on the cost per meet and how much schools are now participating and how many meets they expect. Because I don't think we have enough information on that. Also, $150,000 for statewide participation at student-led conferences for middle and high schools. $5 million for middle school athletic programs. $2.5 million for workforce readiness initiative. $1,652,040 for students to apply skills and knowledge in a workplace context partnering with local employers and regional economic development priorities. $56,350 for math camps. $45,000 for interstate travel funds for Neighbor Island student participation in annual junior ROTC programs, competitions. $275,000 for foreign language programs in preparation of high-demand occupations in hospitality and tourism and cybersecurity. $579,450 for middle school education. $646,138 for professional learning in classrooms to support activities such as applied mathematics, financial literacy education, and instructional resources. $110,136 for implementation of middle school student councils, enhanced student activities programs, and annual middle-level student leadership summit for grades six through eight. And $500,000 for teaching and learning in secondary mathematics. We're also making technical and non-substantive amendments for the purposes of clarity and consistency.
Yeah, can I ask a question for DOE?
Sure.
So DOE, did you, is this funds that has been requested for? Or where did the, how did we arrive at these numbers?
Thank you for the question, Senator. I believe those were requests that we were submitted in.
Yes, they are in our board-approved budget.
I'm sorry?
There are line items in our board-approved budget, correct.
So they're in the board-approved budget, it wasn't approved by the governor?
Some of them are, some of them are not, but they were all, they were all put forward to the legislature as line item requests.
Is there a reason why we're only getting it now?
I am not sure.
When did the board approve it?
In October.
When did the governor approve it?
He did, on Sunday.
That would've come down, I think, in January or his budget.
Can we get a list of which ones the governor approved? Which ones he didn't?
Yes.
Okay, the other question I have is that, by inserting money in here for the surfing and if it's to DOE and it's not a DOE-run program, huh? Is that problematic?
Bryce.
Because if this is a club sport, how do we, how do we appropriate monies to DOE to give to a club sport?
It, in my opinion, it would be different from what you're doing with all the other sports. If surfing does become a sport, the main funding we would need would be for coaches' salaries and then that would have to expand from what we have right now.
So this item should have gone through GIA requests and not necessarily into the DOE budget? Yeah, because it's more of a grant.
It could have gone through GIA, yes.
It's not to the DOE, because the DOE, you'd have to expend your money for a DOE program. So the only school that's DOE is in Maui, right? That would be able to get the funds?
Through MIL, through, yeah.
Through the MIL, yeah. The public schools that are surfing, that are doing surfing right now.
Right.
Yes, if it was appropriate for surfing, it would go through MIL.
Because any club, any club paddling, any club volleyball, any club wouldn't be able to get us to put funds into DOE so you can give them the funds.
It would be considered a club, Senator.
Yeah.
Yes, and I believe the number that was shared, I believe 90 somewhat schools, is inclusive of private schools. That was shared earlier in the testimony.
Oh, because it includes private schools as well?
I believe so, what was shared, yes.
That is, that is the total number of schools in the HHSAA, which includes all islands, public and private.
Okay, okay, yeah, I guess I'm uncomfortable with us inserting monies for non-DOE sports at this point because, yeah, I don't know how you would expend that funds, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So could we insert that concerns into the committee report, one change?
Yes. Did I read it?
You did.
But for the, for the promotion and support of surfing as an intercollegiate sport, interscholastic sport, I am recommending the $42,000 since that's all that is.
But I think what would happen is because it's not an interscholastic sport, I don't know that they could actually give the money to the clubs for the meets, right? I don't think so, because it specifically says, yeah.
Only for schools, right?
It's for the promotion and support of surfing as an intercollegiate sport, yeah.
But I don't want them to think that they could, they might get the funding because I don't think under this situation, they'd get it. Okay.
So, but I guess just as an added note, I know that you said this is basically just for a coach's salary.
No, they would need funds for coaches' salaries if we wanted to do a sport, an interscholastic sport at a school. You would need monies for coaches' salaries.
Yeah, and I think I would like, I guess, more assurance because of the sport itself and the hazards of the sport as to.
Assurance.
You know, when they're gonna go out for surf meets. Besides the judges, what kind of safety net do they have for the students out there? Do they have professional surfers out there to help students who may be hurt? You know what I'm saying, is that, it's not like we can run and go help them up.
Yeah, but I think Maui has, because Maui's been doing it, so they probably have some.
Yeah, but I think those are the things that we have to look at further, okay? Yeah, so any further questions for the vote, please?
So the recommendation is HB 500, HD1 to pass with amendments as read by the Chair, Chair of Old Side, Vice Chair of Old Side, Senator Ashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Richards is excused, Senator Favella.
Aye.
Four ayes, one excuse, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Do we have one more?
Nope, that's it.
That's it? We're adjourned, thank you.